All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome. I'd like to call the May 27, 2019 meeting to order at 7:01 PM. And I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Kowloon Sylas people. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Sorry, just before we do, I just had a note. Are we removing 8.5? Okay. It looks like, I'm looking, sorry, I just, I just had a late note. May I look at removing, we need to remove 8.5 off of tonight, please? So with that correction, we, I'm looking for approval. Thank you. So moved by councillor Logan. Seconded by councillor Kobayashi. Thank you, all those in favor. Opposed, carried. Councillor Parkinson's staring me down for some reason. Public participation. I'd like to invite anyone present to take this opportunity to address council, to present concerns or ask questions of council. Comments pertaining to a matter that has been the subject of a public hearing are prohibited where the bylaws related to the matter have not been presented to council for consideration or adoption. There is a maximum of 20 minutes allocated for public participation. Topics should be addressed briefly to allow other speakers an opportunity to address council. And this is not for those who are presenting in the next category. So this is just sort of public, general public. Is there anybody? Yep, come on up. Sorry, if you don't mind stepping up to the... Oh. Thank you. We'll, we'll, we'll hunt you down one. We've, we found you one. We're good. Is there any other public?
Judith Collington, 3338 Aisling Road. You guys all know me. And I know all of you. And you know that I am passionate about many things in this community. Well, when it comes to climate change, I'm off the scale. So I give you due warning. I'm speaking, of course, to item 8.3 on the agenda regarding declaring a climate emergency. So I am somebody who is not easily scared. And I am an unrepentant optimist. But climate change terrifies me. And I really hope it terrifies all of you. Because if it doesn't, you don't understand it. You may have been following Grace Turnenberg. She's the 16-year-old Swede who is responsible for a lot of the youth action around climate. And if you listen to her, she says, "Adults around me are hopeful." She says, "I don't want you to be hopeful. I want you to panic." And then take action. I attended the new Green New Deal meeting last week. It was amazing. There were about 300 people, all age groups, different ethnicities, different backgrounds, everybody in the room for the same thing. But what really hit me to the core was this young woman who was one of the organizers. And as she was talking about it, you could hear the fear in her voice about the consequences of us not taking action on climate change. It affects her future very directly. Most of you and me will not be around to see the worst impacts of it. It's going to get a little bit more uncomfortable. But for our kids, for our grandkids, the consequences of not taking action are dire, and I'm not exaggerating. So a declaration of a climate emergency is nice. I hope you do it. But frankly, it's meaningless unless you also take action. And all too often, I hear people saying, "What difference does it make? Single individual, single community? You know, somebody else should be doing something. India should be doing something. China should be doing something. Big industry should be doing something. My peace doesn't make any difference." Bullshit. Sorry. The proudest moment, the proudest moment, I had as a Colwood councillor was when Colwood was nominated for the Earth Hour City Challenge. For those of you who weren't around at the time or are not familiar with it, it's a global competition in which three communities, three cities from each of the participating countries are nominated. And Colwood was one of the Canadian nominees. We were on the same stage as cities like Vancouver and Surrey and Delhi and San Francisco and Oslo and Chicago and Stockholm and little old Colwood. So in Vancouver, I made a presentation about this. I talked about Colwood's efforts to address climate change. And I talked about the real difference that a single community, even a little one like ours, can make. And we got by far the biggest round of applause. People got it. Small communities can make a difference, just like big ones can. So don't let anybody tell you, and please don't tell me, that one community can't make a difference because Colwood has already proved that we can. So yeah, our contribution to mitigation, stopping the worst effects of climate change, will be small, but they're important nonetheless. And as for adapting to the, to the effects that we are and we will be increasingly facing, you are the team that needs to make sure that we are prepared. So action is essential. I hope you'll support the staff recommendation, especially the last part that talks about taking action. And if you're looking for ideas, a couple of thoughts to throw in, one thing you can do is move towards the Step Code for Buildings. And I would encourage you to get to Level 3 as soon as possible. It's a real win for homeowners as well as for the city. Secondly, trees. Plant trees in lots of public places. They do wonderful things, like they provide shade. It's fabulous adaptation to climate change. And for the record, yes, I did write the book on urban forests and adapting, using them to adapt to climate change. They're also useful for absorbing carbon, so mitigation part of the equation as well. So like Greta, I'm urging you to panic. And then take action. You guys are the community leaders. I hope you are, all of you, going to be able to look into the eyes of your children and your grandchildren and all of your other favorite young people and say, "I did my best to help this community combat climate change." Thank you.
Thank you, Judith.
Hi. My name is John Vinser, 3340 Painter Road. I just wanted to voice my support for, as Judith just so succinctly outlined, for your recommendation for a climate emergency, plus the other recommendations listed as well, all three. There may, maybe other things that we can glean from, I guess, a multi-jurisdictional approach to, to declaring a climate emergency. Perhaps bulk purchasing of electric vehicles with the other, the other jurisdictions that agree. Excuse me, I need my glasses for this. Bulk purchase of LED lighting fixtures or, or other LED lighting to reduce the carbon footprint. Or ideas or initiative sharing with the other like-minded jurisdictions that are also declaring a climate emergency. That's all I have to say, but thank you for the time.
Thank you, John.
I'm Lawrence Serge from 3159 Antrimus Crescent. I too would like to speak to item 8.3, the issue of a climate emergency. And I would urge you to adopt the staff recommendation. My wife and I recently dealt with city staff. It was very pleasant. And I will confess that it was about getting a permit to remove a tree. But on the other hand, I look at some monthly report for our 15 photovoltaic panels. And it tells me that last month, we offset enough carbon to be the equivalent of actually having seven trees. And I know that everybody's capacities are different. I'm old enough that I'll be gone by the time worse results come along. I don't have any kids, so I can't say, "Well, I'm not going to have this impact on my children." But the fact is that we're a community, and I want to do my part in order to mitigate the effects on your children and your grandchildren. And I'm willing to pay the price in the short term for long-term benefits. If we look at Colwood's official community plan, some of our prized assets are Royal Bay. We have its new beach down there. We have events like Eat &amp; Beat, that's Long Ocean Boulevard, that we need only think back to last winter when I drove along to Earth Repile and then to reach the public works crew from the city of Colwood because water was basically overflowing part of the road. So we don't have a large margin of error. We have to act now in the same way as back in 1912, I believe, when the Titanic struck iceberg and sunk. There were a lot of different issues, but perhaps the most serious problem was an attitude that the Titanic was an unthinkable ship. And the fact is that in this case, we're not going down, but rather water levels are rising. And now is the time to take action. And I urge you to follow the staff recommendations. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lawrence.
Hello, I'm Carol Brown, living at 796 Qalta Crescent. And I too wish council to fully endorse any proposal to declare a climate emergency. I really don't think there could be a more important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
I'm Hillary Mackey from 3159 Antrimus Crescent. And the tree in question was one that the former owner had dragged, dug up in the woods and planted in our yard, so it didn't really fit. But we're putting in something that's more suitable. But I, I think that we all do, most people believe that we are experiencing climate change. And I think the, a really important part of what, it can be useful if we adopt it as a recommendation, we adopt this recommendation and then everybody knows that Colwood has that initiative. I think then, then everybody, it's kind of like a beacon, that it leads us to choose according to that principle that we agree climate change is an issue coming for us. So that's why I'd like to see Colwood do it, so that we keep it front and center in our awareness and have it guide our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary.
Senator Beaton, 172 Belmont Road. Recently, my children's school had a reunification drill. And it was the first time where they invited parents to come along and be part of the drill. So we had to pretend it was an emergency disaster and line up and wait to sign out our kids and wait for them to drop and hide and cover in school as if it was a real emergency. And it really opened up my eyes and made me consider, what are we doing as a community? How prepared are we? Because it is climate change that can trigger these big emergency situations. And, you know, in our schools, they do a wonderful job of promoting understanding towards using better products, reducing plastic, doing our part. So what are we doing as a community? And what can you bring to inspire the community to step up their game? And it also got me wondering, I live in Colwood, but my kids are in a school in Langford, and I have to cross that highway and those bridges. What if they're collapsed? How do I get back to my kids and bring them back here? And where is our safe location for us to evacuate to? Is it large enough to accommodate the majority of citizens nowadays? Has that been reviewed? I know where I need to go as a military spouse, but as a member of this community, what if I can't get there and I need to go where Colwood needs me? Has that been put out to the public consistently so that everybody is well-informed? So I just want to leave you with that thought, and thank you.
Thank you.
Semegigat segirmanak doy simnysim kengeasim. I acknowledge that we're, excuse me, on Lakewangon Territory and give me, now I want to speak, now I got a frog. Acknowledge that we're on Lakewangon Territory and give thanks for allowing us to be here today. I just want to say that I really support the climate action. And I also want to remember that our government today is the NDP government. And that I also want to bring attention to what's happening in the north, in my territory, where along the Watzuutin and Getzan territories, where the governments are allowing mass destruction of territory. And so I just want to bring your attention that I hope that the council will, you know, write letters to the government to say that they wanted to stop the mass destruction on territories. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I want to make sure I give it an opportunity. Okay, thank you. Thank you all for, it was, that was a wonderful participation. It's, it's nice to hear the public share with council their, their thoughts. Moving on to mayor's message. I have a couple of, excuse me, proclamations I'd just like to acknowledge that I signed this month. The first was on June 1st, it's Intergenerational Day Canada. And it's to raise awareness about the power of making simple, respectful, intergenerational connections. As well, there, June 1st is also Access Awareness Day. It's a day of individuals and group action to promote equity opportunities for people of all abilities. And then as well, for the month of June, it is also ALS Month. And I'm going to give this to councillor, these are ASL flowers. Can you pass those on to council? And Dean? Can I give you these three? Thank you. So it is ALS, ALS Month, also known as Lou Gehrig's Disease. It's a rapidly progressive fatal motor neuron disease, which there is no cure. The blue cornflower, which I've just handed out, is the international flower of hope for ALS. The blue cornflower plant is a very courageous plant, being able to stand up to all the elements of nature, sometimes many other plants cannot do. And the flower, with its star-like blossoms of brilliant blue, is one of the most striking wildflowers. Hence the reason why ALS chose that. Also, in addition, June 3rd through 9th is BC Child and Youth Care Week. I am looking to council, is, does council have anything that they would like to share? Councillor Day.
Thank you. I attended last week an information session with the, at the Songhe's Wellness Centre with Chief Sam. They raised the issue about trying to protect the Kolkwitz watershed. And they have produced a discussion paper that's not written in stone, but is a potential way forward to give some understanding to the specific issues. The Kolkwitz watershed flows all the way from Highlands down to the gorge. And they are looking to find ways to improve the quality of the watershed so that it can support fish better and that the area can return to some of its former glory prior to colonization. So it's just about how to work together, how we could collaborate and to find ways to safeguard the salmon runs that are facing the impacts of climate change. And they're trying to get local governments to cooperate with them to find ways that we can work together in harmony to improve the, the situation. So I thought it was appropriate to share with you. There's going to be a couple more meetings coming up and looking to get buy-in. And while we're not specifically in the Kolkwitz watershed, I think the way that they work with others is important to know about in hopes that we can also work with First Nations to restore many of the natural areas in Colwood and return some of the functionality back to our oceans and streams.
Thank you, councillor Day. Anyone else? Councillor Baxter?
I just wanted to mention it's Bike to Work Week.
Yes, thank you for remembering.
And I've signed up. I know all the other councillors will be signing up because you can do it online tonight. It's easy to do. And I will be biking every day this week, having remembered after getting here tonight.
Sorry, I forgot to mention also, coming up in June is the, because it's Access Week, I thought I would remind you about the Intermunicipal Advisory Committee on Disability Issues Community Picnic, which is on Thursday, June 27th, at the Machosen Community House. Everyone is welcome. We already have a lot of RSVPs, a lot of seniors will be there, a lot of people with diverse abilities. And anyone and everyone is welcome. It should be a fun event. It goes from 5:30 to about 8:30.
Anyone else? The only other thing that I can think of, and I'm going to stop after this, is we have Eat &amp; Beat starting this Friday. So, no, excuse me, not Eat &amp; Beat, Food Truck Fridays. Food Truck Fridays, Food Truck Saturdays are, are starting this Friday night. And there is music both evenings, all throughout the entire summer. So come on down to the waterfront and have something to eat. And I know it's the Songhe's food truck this weekend, so come and get some bannock. Moving on, 5.1. Can I please get a motion to adopt one senate council minutes from the regular meeting the council held May 13th? Thank you, moved by councillor Kobayashi, seconded by councillor Baxter. Any errors, omissions, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. Can I please get a motion to adopt the public hearing minutes held May 13th? Moved by councillor Day, seconded by councillor Baxter. Any errors, omissions, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. And finally, can I get a, a motion to receive the report of public hearing held on May 13th? Move, proceed. Thank you, moved by councillor Baxter, seconded by councillor Logan. Any errors, omissions, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. 6.1. From Yellow, Yellow Ridge Construction, 342 Whale Road Affordable Housing Financial Partnership, Hugh Froster? I'm hoping, yep.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's great to be here. It's great to see you. Thank you for allowing me to speak for a few minutes. And I've come this evening to make a little presentation about an agenda item that's coming up a little later in the evening, which is a report from your staff about the upcoming Aboriginal Land Trust Affordable Housing project that is being built over on Whale Road. And we at Yellow Ridge are the developer for the project, and we are working diligently to move that project forward. As you know better than I, all living here through this time, we are filling the hole, so to speak. We are eliminating the, the hole that sits there on Whale Road. It's been there a while, as you know, and it has been on the market for some time. It is a complicated piece of property with covenants and DPs and all that sort of stuff, but we are, we are pleased to have, have moved that forward. The project, as many of you would know, of course, is for a six-story, 124-unit, very affordable housing project. And it will bring a lot of much-needed affordable housing to your community. It will also bring substantial annual property taxes. We have presented a letter to your staff regarding financial support for this project. And the contribution to this project is in line with some of your recent OCP policy that was recently enacted, where the council and the community saw fit to endorse some affordable housing and, and make contributions towards it. It's also in keeping with the event that we had here back in February, where we had the announcement by the local MLA, some of the chiefs, Mayor Martin and many of the councillors who I met that day to come out and announce that project. I might point out, and I will leave for you here, invitations to come to the groundbreaking, which is happening in yet just a couple of weeks. And a bit more on that, but I will pass. So that's the reason for why we're here. In our letter to council, vetted by staff and their report, we, we really broke our, our request into two main parts. The first was to look at CACs, some DCCs and some application fees and ask you to waive some of these. And we made note of a number of these that we thought might be applicable for council to consider. And what staff did in their response through the report is that they pointed out that a number of those would require bylaw changes, complicated things that you know well. CACs in particular, DCCs, changing those bylaws are certainly a, a big ask. So they had recommended that a contribution be made out of the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund in lieu of those. And we think that would be terrific. So in bright red, we say, "Yellow Ridge is grateful for this generous contribution. We know you haven't accepted it. That's a bit presumptuous of us." But here we are nevertheless. So we, in better understanding through the report, the, the mechanics of these things, it was pointed out that a contribution, whilst not at the level that we had requested, we think that contribution would be outstanding towards this project. In, when this project, when BC Housing made their Indigenous Housing Fund call, we were immediately drawn to the concern that the projects be shovel-ready. So there are times that BC Housing will fund projects that can take years of rezoning, even OCP rezoning, DPs, that sort of stuff. And, and, and they will, in some of their funding, allow that to happen. In this particular example of the Indigenous Housing Fund, they wanted shovel-ready projects. So as owners of this property, we engaged your staff in a conversation about the opportunity to move quickly forward on the project. And we were, we heard that there was a DP in place and that if we had used that DP and didn't have to go through that process with the public and council, but really used it in, in the manner that it is already existing and, and make some changes to it, which council participated in, in the parking bylaw, that we could get this thing up and running, we could get construction started by June. And that just seemed like a terrific idea, so that's what we put forward. We made that promise to BC Housing, to the Aboriginal Land Trust, that we could run this project, take it through DP, put our BP in, and we'd be under, under construction in June. And it was, it was a large, to a large extent, the reason why BC Housing decided to fund the project. They looked that over, they talked to us, and they said, "All right, we believe you. Let's go." So what we have here is that the project was approved by BC Housing in November last year. We had a development permit approved May 17th, just last week. We made a submission of our building permit on May 17th, just last week. And our building construction is slated to start in June. So we are six months from approval to DP and application to BP. And we want to acknowledge that that's pretty remarkable. That, that the, the council and your very hard-working staff were able to work through the issues with us. And we are delivering on what we said we could do, which is work together cooperatively, professionally, quickly. I emphasize quickly. And, and, and we are truly grateful for how that has come along. BC Housing has been watching this every step of the way, and they were real thrilled to see that development permit that was issued and forwarded accordingly. and, um, they were real thrilled to see that development permit that was issued and forwarded, of course, on to them. So the other, um, element of our letter and request for financial support that we presented had to do with, um, the, what I call here, the two expensive covenant items that were attached to the development permit from the previous project. In granting, um, a new DP, these fees would likely be waived. So my point here is that, at the time that we looked at the way to move forward with the project, we could stay with the existing DP and get to where we are now, or we could go through a new DP project, and we would have, you know, been quite a bit delayed to go through the proper political and public process. But by sticking with the old DP, we inherited its, uh, its covenant. And there are, the covenant is a many-page document, all of which we've discussed at great lengths with your staff, and we understand it and our obligations under it. But there are two items here in particular that I want to bring to the attention of council. And the first is the sewer upgrade. In that covenant that was made, uh, when this DP was passed, it was stated that should the developer bring more units onto the market than had initially been planned by the OCP, they would need to contribute to the sewer upgrade. And the calculation has been done by your staff that that would, uh, translate into a $510,000 cost to the project to, uh, meet that covenant charge. Well, we think that it and the rock fill, which we'll talk to in a moment, that had we gone through the DP process to do a new DP, we'd have been standing here and saying, "That was from the old project. It isn't relevant to the new one. We're applying for a new DP. We need a new conversation to take place about a new project." And in this case, it happens to be an affordable project, which is a mile away from the, the concrete tower that was approved over a decade ago. The, the calculation here about how many units were more than the existing OCP at the time, which I think was from 1997, that cal, the base calculation is made. As you know, we, as an affordable project, are going to use ultra-low volume faucets, appliances, toilets. So the flow out of these will be far less than it was ever contemplated at the time that the OCP was done in 1997, if I have that year correct. So our flow out of this building, as particularly because of its affordability and the fact that we are demanded, we are, BC Housing demands that we use low flow, is going to be much less than had originally been contemplated when this was put on to the covenant. And we think it's a non-reverse charge. The second is the rock fill of $480,000. This rock fill covenant, uh, issue on the covenant was put in place with the expectation that when the hole out there that we saw just a minute ago was dug, we would have good fill, and that that good fill could be used for the intersection right beside it, and that that would be a proper and clever thing for the developer to do. Dig the hole, take the good rock out, give it to the city. The city would give him credit by the ton, and everybody would win. And it was a, it was one of the many things that the developer agreed to do to get his large concrete high-rise built. What turned out to happen is that the rock wasn't usable, according to the engineers at the time, to be used in the manner that had originally been contemplated, and not one truckload of rock was used out of the hole. Notwithstanding everyone's idea at the time that this was going to be a great deal, it didn't work out because the rock was simply not usable. But this covenant for $480,000 remains, uh, as part of, um, what, what we are faced with today. So we, uh, are specifically wanting to focus on these two items and are asking that the council amend the covenant to remove, uh, these two items from it such that we don't have to pay them. Our project is going to fill a, a, a big housing need here in the community. And the, uh, the Aboriginal Land Trust and BC Housing are being saddled with this $990,000 of combined costs due to a project that was, that is old and long-forgotten. And we feel that it is not, um, appropriate for them to be, those costs to be placed upon this project. We, we looked at this when we were doing our original budgeting, and of course, that was some time ago, back in November when we put this forward. And whilst we knew they were on there, and we weren't going the new DP way, we thought we would come to council specifically and talk about them because we thought that they would be things that you would give serious consideration to waiving for this project. And that is my presentation. Thank you.
Are we open? This is only specific to the presentation? No, that's, that's good, thank you.
It may seem as if it's got nothing to do with this, and that's because it doesn't. Are you going to do onsite irrigation?
The... That is a good question. I'm hesitant only to answer it because the irrigation conversation between the landscaper and our construction department has gone back and forth. We've, we've had the CRD involved because of the galloping goose at the bottom. They've participated in this and want some natural growth there. Is there irrigation on the back of ours? I would suggest there is. But I, I need to check. We're, we're putting a big patio out at the back for use by the residents. And we're putting, it's not meant to be a high maintenance landscape plan. It's meant to be quite natural and quite low maintenance. And I can't tell you today about the irrigation on that. I apologize. I'm pleased to check into it and get back.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two more presentations. Uh, the City of Callwood Emergency Program Coordinator Jeff Amy will providing two presentations to council. The first is related to a recent study conducted by Royal Roads University students entitled Promoting Wildlife Evacuation Resilience. And the second presentation is about a new program, the West Shore Alert. Yeah, you're up.
So Royal Roads offer a master, Masters of Arts in Disaster and Emergency Management Program, commonly called MAIDOM. Students are predominantly Canadian and US, but they do get other countries coming in as well. Those that did our report were two Canadian and six from the US. It is a three-year program, distance learning, and they come in every year for a two-week residence. The second-year students coming in undertake a community project during their residence, and the class is split into six or eight students in a group. And the ones that undertook our study were from the fire department, from healthcare, military, education, and GIS mapping. Last year, they did a study for the City of Langford on personal preparedness and how prepared people were for emergencies. This year, they did one for the City of Victoria on preparedness for the tourist industry. They did one for sandwich on the effectiveness of face-to-face education. And our project was wildfire in Royal Roads Campus, and they titled it Promoted Wildfire Evacuation Resilience on a Wildfire in Royal Roads. The, the students got input from a variety of partners, um, not only myself. I spent a day and a half down there at different times with them, but Callwood Fire Department, the Royal Fire Department, Royal Road Security, Sangster School, John Stub School, Brook School, Pacific, Pacific Activity Center, DND, Belmont Park Development, RCMP, and the Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to quote from the report. "The findings from the community engagement portion of this project reveal that overall the partner agencies of Callwood that participate in this project are highly resilient. It was found that there is no demonstrated commitment to disaster preparedness." There, sorry, there is a demonstrated commitment to disaster preparedness throughout the community. There are many existing networks and partnerships, and it's a very clear set of values. Importantly, a unifying trend was that all participants expressed an interest and willingness to improve wildfire evacuation preparedness. So in Callwood wildfires, uh, this is from their report, are a low-probability event, but a high-risk event. They have a 170-acre forested area there, and they consider that a high risk for, uh, possible wildfire. They recognized in the report that, uh, Callwood was recognized as the, one of the top 100 neighborhoods to live in in Canada, and I think that was in 2013, and a role model city in emergency preparedness. I believe that was also in 2013. That was a United Nations recommendation. So making cities resilient. So the fire risk previous years, the fire's been infrequent, minor occurrences that have not challenged Callwood's capacity. According to provincial agencies, both the wildfire branch and emergency management BC, over the last five years, the community has experienced drier and warmer conditions, which have resulted in dying cedar tree population and increased fire risk. So it's not only cedar trees that are dying. I was telling some of the councillors earlier, um, the big arbutus tree by Ridley's office and between there and, uh, Cockle House is dying. There's one on the top of Melbourne that's dying. I drove down Ocean Boulevard today, and there's a lot of trees that are dying going down Ocean Boulevard. So, um, it is a, it is a problem. A map produced in 2018 by the Ministry of Forests shows extreme fire risks throughout the forested area of Royal Roads, Hatley Park, and Belmont Park. This area includes three elementary schools, Royal Roads University, and Callwood Fire Department, as well as businesses and residents. And now we have the new Brook School there besides the three elementary schools as well. So there are recommendations for improvement for us. Improve community awareness and education regarding the wildfire risk in the area. Implementing the Fire Smart program, and I'll mention a little bit more about that, but some community stakeholders have indicated it may be difficult to follow due to our recent tree bylaws. So we need to sort that out. Uh, this conflict needs to be addressed, and it's recommended the public be trained in Fire Smart as well. So did any of you see the six o'clock or five o'clock news tonight? House fire in Campbell River. Um, there are Fire Smart community. Fire Smart is removing combustibles from, basically from structures. Don't pile your firewood against your house. Um, clear all the dry grass. This house in Campbell River that nearly burned, fire came within a meter of it. Had a lot of blackberry bushes growing. And even though the blackberry bushes were green, they still burned. And so removing everything that can burn, dry leaves, needles, all that kind of stuff. And that's what the Fire Smart program is about. So they're recommending that we, uh, we look at that. And if we're doing Fire Smart, I recommend that we also teach it to our public work staff and Royal Roads ground staff. School District 62 in Brooks need to develop plans for evacuation of students off the school property to acceptable, safe refuges. Other schools, other public buildings, something like that. The schools have plans for evacuating students, and as we heard earlier, they go out onto the school grounds and expect the parents to pick them up. So for things like earthquakes and things like that, that's great. But in a fire situation, that's not great. We need to get them off the, off the campus. So, uh, we're going to be working with the school districts and, and that. And when I say public buildings, could be another school, could be the One If You Correct Center, could be somewhere else that they're going to go, but it's safe. When Brook School were asked what their plan was for evacuating off-campus, their answer was, "We'll send them to London Drugs." So, so better communications to the public during emergencies through social media. So, uh, we can do better in getting the message out to the public. Addressing the single access, um, access egress routes. So in the Heatherbell area, we have increased the population. We're increasing the population down there. There is only one access and egress route. So we've added Seaside, or we're adding it, uh, Pacific Landing, Two Waters down there, but there's still only one way out. I understand from Council Baxter that Two Waters were putting in a driveway, but I think it should be a road that's in there. And the same with Belmont Park. There's only one way in and one way out in Belmont Park. And both of these areas border Royal Roads property, and they could be compromised by fire. So we need to, uh, to work in that and get them addressed. We need to work with our partners a little more regarding emergency preparedness. We do that on a, on a fairly regular basis. We need to think about the audience of Royal Roads and now the Brook School. A lot of ESL students there, English second language. And we may need to do some messaging in their languages as opposed to all, um, all English. And they're recommending promotion of West Shore Alert, which I'll be covering, uh, in a few minutes. And they have three recommendations for Royal Roads specifically. One was to increase their signage for fire ratings in their property and the, uh, in the acreage that's there. More signs for exit trails in, uh, in various languages, and all their signs be in various languages. So that's the report. Um, you have a copy of it. It is, we'll be going out to staff this week. I met with the mayor, and we discussed how are we going to do it. We thought you guys should see it first before it goes out to staff. So it will be distributed to department heads within the next few days. So.
Before you move on, uh, Jeff, are there any questions about this specific item? Council Baxter?
I'd like to speak when the questions are finished on this.
Okay. Uh, are there any questions? Floor's yours.
Okay, I'd like to move that staff be asked to produce in time for budget deliberations in the fall, a report on, um, what of these proposals should be implemented, um, if any, and, uh, and some idea of how they might be done.
Before we have a discussion, I need a second or... Anyone?
One second for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Council Day. Uh, do you want to motivate before I go to Council Parkinson?
I would love to motivate if, if that's possible. I, I like this report, um, but it doesn't come out with, uh, very concise recommendations. There's nothing we can take there and say, "Hey, let's implement that." And I think it would, in any case, uh, behoove us to ask staff, uh, for comments, and I presume the fire department would be involved in that, perhaps other emergency services. And, uh, but I think that by the looks of the report and knowing that the risk of fire, uh, wildfire is increasing, I think we need a report.
Thank you. Uh, Council Parkinson?
I just, uh, I'm not clear what, what proposals you're talking about having staff look at because I didn't see any in the report. I think, I think, uh, Jeff made a few proposals. Are those ones you're talking about?
Well, as I understand it, Jeff was extracting that from the report because the report talks about education for the public, for instance.
Yes.
But it, but it doesn't say anything specific about how that should be done or when. But I think that's a good idea because I think we had questions earlier this evening about, um, how, how to respond in the case of an emergency. And although, um, you know, that may be written in a plan somewhere already, it, it, I don't think it's been communicated widely to the public.
Yeah, exactly. I guess, uh, I wonder if you were talking about second egresses and stuff like that.
I...
In which case, I'm wondering if I should leave because one of them, of course, would go through my property.
Well, I think that, um, I think that the Lagoon area has, uh, at least two accesses, Lagoon Road and Hatley to Melbourne.
And, and to interrupt, I think we are also just talking about report, having staff report back to council. So this is just about staff doing some work and bringing it back to this table. Seeing, is there any other discussion before I call the question on this? Seeing none, I'm going to call the que, oh, Council Day.
Sorry, I just wanted to say that there, there's a lot of, uh, there's been a lot of information over the years about Fire Smart practices. And, uh, I, I haven't always agreed with, with all of them. But because we are increasingly seeing the effects of climate change, I think it is, uh, important for us to look at what are some steps that we could take and which ones we would prioritize, um, in, in terms of, uh, bringing that information forward to the community. Because many of the Fire Smart manuals, if you look at them, they're written for Northwestern BC or, you know, someplace that, that isn't really got our particular situation. So I think between what's raised in the report, what Jeff already knows and can share with staff through his longtime commitment with the fire department and our staff, we can probably come up with some recommendations to council that are maybe just the low-hanging fruit and ways that we could engage the community.
All right, I'm going to call the question. All right, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Geoff, go ahead, you can do the second one.
Okay. Second one is, we have implemented a system, an alerting system, a public alert notification system. We have partnered with the Capital Regional District on it. It's a system they use for the electoral areas. And we have got Langford, Callwood, Highlands, and View Royal, now under the brand name of Westshore Alert. It is a system that you can register, you have to register for it, it's not automatic. You sign up for it, and we would send out notification to you, and I'll explain the notifications in a minute, for things like tsunami warnings, for down power lines, for toxic spills, whatever you want, we can send out alerts for that stuff. So, it is not conflicting with the provincial one, provincial federal one, they still have theirs. But we can localize this one to specific areas, so we could localize it for tsunami warnings to the residents down the lagoon that are registered for it. We can, I've asked the, sorry, I've asked the city staff to register, we can put the staff in a group, and we can recall staff if we have to activate our E O C. The Peninsula municipalities, the three of them are using it, but they did not partner with C R D, they did it independently. And the reason we partner with C R D is the more people you have registered, the cheaper it is. So, we're saving bucks by partnering with C R D on it. So, as I said, the electoral areas are using it. And SUK has now got on board as well. So, we went under the brand name of Westshore Alert, using the Westshore detachment catchment area. So, you register. Machosen, let me just back up a minute. Machosen have their own system, they have to register the individuals, and if the individual changes their phone number, address, or anything else, staff at Machosen have to make that change. With this system, you register, you get a username and password, which you generate, and you can go into the system at any time to change how you get your messages, your phone number, your address, whatever you want, or to discontinue the service. So, you can receive notification on the home phone, cellphone, work phone, email, and SMS text message, which is messenger on your phone. It will repeat, except for the email and the SMS text message, it will repeat until you acknowledge it. So, we know you got it. So, it'll make multiple attempts to do that. If you don't sign up, you're not going to be getting the messages, so we encourage people to sign up. When you go into the Westshore Alert site, the four logos come up for the four municipalities, you click on the Callwood one, it comes up with the registration information, you fill that out, and you're registered for it. The information is stored in Canada. It will not be shared with anybody under the Privacy Protection Act. It will not be shared with anybody at all. And it, as I say, it's stored in Canada. So, that's about the system. There's some cards, I gave them to councillors, there's some on the table over there. So, all you have to do is go online to Westshore Alert, click on the Callwood logo, and you can register. As of Thursday of last week, we have 300 people registered in Callwood already. We did some at the Emergency Preparedness Fair, and we were ahead of both View Royal and Langford in the number that had registered for it. So, it's a system for, basically for public safety, so that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Geoff. Doug, or excuse me, councillor Kobayashi?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question here, Geoff. What wasn't clear to me, I registered this afternoon.
Okay.
I saw that login, and I registered, but it says charge may apply, but I'm not too clear on how much that charge is. I have no idea, because it doesn't tell you how much they're going to charge me for it.
They're not going to charge you for anything. The city pays for it. There is no charge for individual registration.
Well, because it says, it says there in the fine print, when you register, it does say that.
There is no charge for individual registration.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Kobayashi, that's probably for your SMS message and the way your plan is set up, that you might incur...
For the SMS, you may get it on your phone, charged for that.
Thank you. Thanks for doing all that, Geoff. Very much appreciated. Moving on to 7.1, Mayor Mike Hurley from the city of Burnaby. City of Burnaby is requesting support for the requested changes to the community charter related to expanding investment opportunities. Staff are available for questions if anybody has anything. What's the will of council? Councillor Parkinson?
I would certainly support this. I think it's worthwhile investigating.
Okay.
So, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
Thank you. It is a motion.
All right. And so, sorry, what is that motion doing? You're, what are you, are more than just receiving it, what are you looking for in this?
That we support this, especially at U B C M, I think it's coming up, but I don't know whether we should send a letter ahead of time.
Understood. Okay, I got a mover by councillor Parkinson, who's seconding it. Councillor Jensen seconded it. Stuart, do you want to motivate at all?
Well, I'll give it a good shot. The first time, the first time you read this, you have to go back to the movie that we all watched, The Big Short, when they had the financial disaster around the world, and there were a few, a few, I think, villages in Finland that lost all their investments because they had invested in something. However, I suspect that whatever guidelines are put in place will not allow us to get into pork bellies and investments like that. And I think that when we do around this table talk about sustainable infrastructure funding and putting away money that we may not be using for 20, 30, 40 years, that the concept of perhaps putting it into some boring stock market equities that might average over that time period a 6% return versus boring bonds that might average a 2% return could make a difference to our citizens. So, you know, again, we'll have to see, the devil will be in the details when this policy gets worked out, but I definitely think it's something that's worthy of exploring and perhaps for funds that are long-term, not needed, might be a little better return for the city.
Great, thank you. Councillor Kobayashi, then Day.
I agree with you, councillor. But my question, my question is actually directed to the Director of Finance. I'm just wondering, what's the governance model on this? Are you the, we, I understand we do have financial advisors, but are you the, because in most cases, when you have these, you have a board of governors or board of directors that oversee this and do the okaying. So, can you just explain that, the governance model for, thank you?
Through the chair, yes. Council's approved an investment policy, so staff have the freedom to invest surplus funds within the confines of that policy. It can be revisited at any time, and it's further restricted by the community charter on what sort of investments the city can engage in.
Councillor Day?
Thank you. My inclination on reading this letter was to ask for more information from staff, because I am a little concerned. I've heard of a lot of different investment schemes over the years for local governments, community bonds, for one example, which ended up not really being very well favored by most municipalities, simply because they weren't paying back as well as they had been envisioned to. So, I'm certainly fine with supporting this motion going forward at this time, but I certainly am hoping that we're going to get more information before we're being asked to sign on to it, because I do think that governments should be particularly low-risk investors. And there are a number of initiatives out there that have been based on pooling the resources of local governments, including the municipal finance authority, which we have eventually not signed on with, because they weren't really as good in the end as they seemed in the beginning. So, I just think it requires careful management. I'm fine with signing on at this point in time, but I'm looking for more information further down the line.
Councillor Parkinson?
Yeah, I agree completely. I just think let's let others do the heavy lifting. This will be a policy that'll take quite some time to work its way through various regulations and provincial laws and what have you, at which point we can decide, as our Director of Finance says, we have an investment policy now that they follow. We may have an opportunity to expand that, and we may choose to do so or not at the right time. So, I don't think, I don't think we should ask our staff to do anything at this point. Let's let others do the heavy lifting and see where it gets to.
All right, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Congratulations, councillor Parkinson, you won. You got one. You got, you got one this year. 7.2, which is the Wanda Fuka 55 Activity Centre, requests for a letter of support regarding the new Horizons grant. Basically, this was an email that was received, just looking for a mayor's letter supporting the request for a $25,000 new Horizons grant. Councillor Day?
Thank you. I'd just like to move that we write a letter of support.
Second.
That's a great question. Does councillor, to staff, does councillor Kobayashi need to exclude himself since he's a member of the Wanda Fuka Senior Centre?
I don't believe so, because his interests are common with everybody else's.
Okay. Great, yeah, that's... We were all, we were all wondering how you got in. So, you do not need to recuse yourself. So, we do have a letter, or the motion, a mover and a second, or so I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Moving on to 8.1, Director of Finance, U B C M Excellence in Asset Management Award Application. Staff are seeking council support by way of resolution for the city to apply for the 2019 U B C M Excellence Awards Program for the city's Sustainable Infrastructure Replacement Plan. Councillor Logan?
Happy to move it, Your Worship.
Thank you, moved by councillor...
A second, yeah.
Oh, who do I give that to? I'm going to give it to councillor Kobayashi, because he was enthusiastic. Any discussion?
Your Worship, I...
Oh, yeah, Stuart, yeah, I'll let you motivate.
Thank you, thank you for motivating, letting me motivate. I never realized, actually, until, until I just saw an announcement that our Director of Finance made a presentation in L A to an international group on our plan. I never, I never appreciated the magnitude of the decision that we made and the plan that we endorsed until, until I saw that. And really, you know, when we made that, when we, when we resolved to have this plan put in place, I thought, well, yeah, it takes some guts, but it's the right thing to do. But I never realized just how forward-thinking it was and how much of a, of a place on the radar it put us. So, I really do think that we need to brag about this amongst our peers, and I wholly support and would expect that we get some recognition at U B C M. I mean, this is a big deal and shows real leadership. So, I do commend our Director of Finance and his staff for pushing us in this direction, and it's been recognized.
Thank you. We're going to make sure we send you to the valuation team when they, when they do that. Any other discussion? Seeing, oh, councillor Parkinson?
Couple of things. Firstly, I noticed that there's two awards spoken of, and I just wondered which one would be the application. There's two of these excellence categories, excellence in asset management and excellence in sustainability. Is the intention to apply for both, one or the other, or what's the plan?
I will look to staff.
Through Your Worship, it's one application, but you can select one or more categories. So, in this case, we've selected two categories.
And I certainly don't want to take away from the good work that's been done and recognize that it's just, you know, a crackerjack piece of work, and it's been done well. But I would want to remind council that it's not something that we have agreed to and agreed to follow in perpetuity. We have certainly followed the plan for one year, but whether, in fact, this council and future councils will continue to follow and implement that, there's some discussion to be had about whether, in fact, it's the right way to go. It's a very good way to go, but it is a question of taking money from our citizens today to be spent many years in the future, and there's some debate to be had about that. So, I think at the time that this came forward, we did, in fact, set aside the recommended amount of money this year. What we decide to do in future years is up to a debate by this council and future councils. So, I just think we have to be careful to say that we have implemented this plan. We've certainly received it, we've recognized it as being a heck of a foundation document, but I don't think, I certainly don't believe that we've said, and this is the path we're going down come hell or high water, so.
All right, thank you. Seeing no, yeah, I'm not, yeah, we're not sending Stuart to the motivation group. Seeing no other discussion, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. 8.2, Director of Finance, Westshore Park and Rack, 2019 Budget Approval. The Board of Directors is requesting municipal approval on the 2019 budget. Staff are here for questions. Councillor Kobayashi, then Baxter.
I just have a, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do have a few questions. First of all, I noticed that in the 2019 budget, there's a dramatic decrease in admin by 27%. Is that sustainable? Like, is that, why, why was that such a big drop?
Through Your Worship, there was a one-time increase last year of approximately $60,000, and that was to hire a consultant to do the review of the Q Centre and the governance structure, which will no longer be needed, as well as some of the administration linked to the Curling Centre, and a couple other one-time special projects.
Just, just continue down. And I guess they don't have something called a balance sheet, eh? I find financials ridiculous to read, try to read right now, when I don't have a balance sheet. I just find, you know, you can say anything on them, right? So, I usually track the inconsistencies with the balance sheet. So, traditionally, they don't produce them, or?
Through Your Worship, they do prepare annual financial statements, but that's a snapshot of the past, this is a snapshot of the future. To give the society credit, they have improved the balance sheet information with this budget than previous budgets. For instance, it has a projection of the reserve funds, right? That's a balance sheet item for, to that in 2015, yes. It's not a complete picture of what your balance sheet is projected to look like, which is what I think you're probably looking for. So, some improvement to be had, but I would say there has been some improvement over the last couple of years.
Lastly, there's, of course, these are roll-ups, and we don't get all the detail, thank God, but I tend to be kind of nitty-gritty when I'm looking over financial statements. And no, I'm not an accountant. But I notice that there are some, some of the line items with, you know, they seem to be making arbitrary decisions on what was going, services that were going to close and which one they were going to continue. But I noticed with some of the food and beverage areas, in particular the cafe, for example, I'm not too sure what the heck that is, but it shows a loss, so, and yet, everything else is what I would consider standard gross margins. And just without one, I thought, why would they continue with that operation? Is that just a particular one-time thing next year, or do you know offhand why that is?
Through Your Worship, I'm seeing a net gain from food and beverage, so perhaps you have something specific...
It was specifically how they broke it down? They broke everything down, and the one page has the food and beverage cafe?
I've seen a budget for a, for a net gain of $3,000 for a cafe.
I don't have in front of me, sorry. Okay, regardless, and the other thing, I just want to get in, and when you do the calculations for those, or when they do the calculations, where are the hourly wages? Are they considered part of the cost of goods sold, or are they in the administration costs also?
They are a portion throughout the budget, including some administration. And what they actually did at the board level this year was then allocate administration across all programs, so you could get a clear picture of the profitability of each program by program center. So, that's kind of a new approach. It's to demonstrate to the board the profitable units and the less, and the more subsidized units. It's kind of, if you consider marketing, for instance, you can't necessarily allocate that just to the Q Centre or just to Curling, or, so they have a way of apportioning, is what's called overhead costs, yeah.
Sorry, I thought we were skipping this one, but it's 8.5 we're skipping. My confusion.
Thank you. I would like to see the financials in a different format from Westshore Parks and Rack. Rec in, in the future. I have been involved with the Finance Committee in the past there, and what I am concerned about is how, how choices are being made with regard to the budget. And unfortunately, I won't be able to support the budget this year because I don't agree with the closing of the Curling Rink. And I think that, that, that required a different look at the budget. So this budget is predicated on Curling having been transformed to dry floor space instead of actual Curling, and we've received lots of input from the community that that's a detriment to many people in our community.
If nobody else has any comments, I'll just say my two pieces, two moments on this. I hate this budget, but it's, it has nothing to do with staff. I am gonna support it tonight, and I struggled with supporting it. I do not believe in, in a zero percent lift on, on that, which this organization has been stuck in in the last three years. We're, we're, in fact, we're, we're seeing a two and a half percent decrease in Colwood's contributions to West Shore Park and Rec this year because that we're, we're forced to be in this zero percent growth. It's not sustainable. I mean, we all know that, that we just signed a QP contract, which was two percent. So we know costs have to increase for labor by two percent, and yet we're sticking at a zero percent increase. And it, it means that we have to cancel programmings, or we have to cancel something else. So from a philosophical standpoint, I was looking at it, and by voting this budget down, we, if we, if we voted in favor of this budget, this budget is $1,750,000. If we vote it down, our contribution will be 1.1 million. So we're actually, we'd be contributing more money to West Shore Park and Rec by not supporting this budget than by supporting it. So hence the reason why I was, was struggling with if I would support this or not. June 4th, the owners, which are the mayors, are meeting for the first time since the election to discuss the owner's agreement. The owner's agreement has to happen by June 20th. Eight point five has been removed from tonight's agenda item, but the fact of the matter is, if we do not get agreement from the five owners that the owner's agreement needs to change and move from being a veto of any municipality to being a proportionate thing, I don't know where this organization, organization goes. And to this point, I have asked other jurisdictions, I have asked for a meeting with the Mayor of Machozen, who refuses to meet with me unless all five owners are in the room. So I have no inclination whatsoever if, come June 4th, the city of, or, excuse me, the District of Machozen will be saying, yes, we're willing to give up our veto, or no, we're not willing to give up our veto when it comes to West Shore Park and Rec. And that has a significant ramifications to us. And I am very, very concerned, because if we do not have a new owner's agreement in place by June 30th, that means West Shore Park and Rec shuts down. It means no summer programming, it means nothing, it means no pool, it means nothing. And hence the reason why staff are looking for a six-month extension. I am not supportive of a six-month extension if we do not have, in principle, an agreement between the five owners of how we're moving this forward. So tonight, we're just approving the budget. I'm gonna vote in favor of the budget because I believe we gave a mandate to staff to do what they had to do, and I don't think it's fair to punish or to say to staff, I'm not gonna support something that I gave you direction to do, even though I agree with it in general principle, but I have to. So, so we're gonna stick with that, but it's, this next month is going to be a very stressful time, and it, it's going to hopefully wake a lot of people up. So I, I, I hope people start realizing that West Shore Park and Rec is, is, there are significant concerns that need to be answered in the next month. Counselor Baxter?
So if, if we approve this budget, it's 1.75.
Seven five.
1.75, 075.
075.
Yeah. And if we don't approve it, we go back to last year's budget?
Correct.
Which is 1.1. So does that mean if we don't approve it because this is a zero increase budget, none of the funding will change?
No, and, and the reason, part, excellent question. Part of the reason I am supporting this tonight is that there's $150,000 in capital spending that is allocated in this new budget that we would vote in favor of, even though we'd be paying less for. If we vote this budget down, that $150,000 that needs to be spent on capital cannot get spent because they don't have approval. So even though we're paying less, I am supportive of this because I do think we need to spend that money, that $150,000 on capital.
Thank you, got it.
Counselor Parkinson?
Do we have any knowledge of the status of the Curling Rink? As, as, as this budget indicates, they're, they're only budgeted for half a year on the Curling Rink, and by, by passing this budget, are we then putting the death knell to the Curling Rink?
I will look to staff. I don't know the answer to that.
No, I don't believe so, because the decision to actually close the arena, the, the, the Curling, although it's been made, it, it hasn't been confirmed yet by the board. The board has still gotta make that decision, and the reason why that decision is still holding out there is because the Curling Club has come forward with a proposal on how they can keep it going. So that is coming before the board in the next week or so.
And if I could just, you have to ask the question, if we're going to pass this budget and it's gonna save us $50,000, presumably somebody else has to pay that $50,000, and are they gonna pass that budget?
Well, yeah, so, so the budget, the, the formula is 50% on population, 50% on property assessment. And so Langford has been growing, so even though it's at zero, Langford's, I'm gonna guess, I haven't seen the numbers, but, but Langford's are probably gonna see a three or four percent lift just because their population has increased and their property assessment values have increased. So even though you're at zero, you can, you, a municipality can still end up paying a lift. So it's, it's gonna be Langford, because Machozen still has the same amount of people since 1912 there, and Highlands has not grown really at all either, so. So, yeah, so it's gonna show up on Langford's, and I would be surprised if Langford voted it down, since they've, they've been sort of driving this. All right, so we, I do not have a motion yet for this. Do I have a motion? Oh, yeah, sorry, one more.
Just one last question. Just, just for posterity's sake here, do you have available by, by membership, how many people use the Rex, the Wanda Fuka Rex Center by, by municipality? You know, for, for the West Shore, do you actually have that number?
Through Your Worship, the, the society keeps track of some rough numbers. I don't have them right now, but they, they do that deliberately because sometimes the municipalities get in these disputes about usage, and they, they found that they correlated similarly to what our contribution was. But, but it's not an exact science, it's, it's a rough, to my knowledge, it's a rough tabulation of, of usage.
The, the numbers, it's, we can track annual passes, and we can track if people sign up for a specific class because we're assigning addresses, but drop-ins, we don't. So we don't have ability to, to, to track, because somebody just comes in and pays $5 to work out for the day. So we, we lose that number, so that's where the numbers get skewed, because we don't know. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, we also don't keep track of the numbers when it comes to team sports, because teams aren't affiliated to a particular municipality necessarily. And I just want to say that I, I am persuaded by the discussion in terms of the capital funding that's required. So, so I, I hear what you're saying. I, I am very, to say the least, I'm very frustrated with the lack of citizen representation at the West Shore Parks and Rec Board. So the move was made to, to put our CAOs there to try to diffuse some of the political tensions. I don't feel that that has happened. It's, it's certainly not the fault of the people who are there trying to do the job, it's simply the nature of the situation that we're in. So because of the capital funding issue, I will support the budget.
All right, Counselor Jensen?
I'll move the staff recommendation, Your Worship.
Thank you. Second. Counselor, Counselor Jensen, Counselor Logan. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Eight point three, Director of Long Range Planning and Sustainability, Climate Emergency Declaration. This report is to provide council with information and options in considering the Capital Regional District Board's request that all local governments in the CRD declare a climate emergency. Does council have any questions for staff? Counselor Baxter? Sure. All right. It's in this one, right? All right, I have a mover, do I have a seconder? Second by Counselor Day, discussion? Oh, yes, sure, yeah, sorry, yes, you do. I will allow, yeah. That's, yeah, it's a new thing at CRD, is they allow the mover to motivate.
Yeah.
I'm trying it out.
So the declaration of a climate emergency is just an honest statement. We know that there's scientific consensus that the climate change is happening, it's accelerating, and we're all contributing to it. So to declare it is, is just an honest statement. The IPCC has said that we have 12 years to get to a point where the world CO2 net production is starting on its way down, and, and about 30 years to get to net-zero CO2 growth. If we don't do that, we may lose control of the situation. I call that an emergency. Given the level of effort required to achieve this, it's gonna need emergency action. Now, we know from the Governor of the Bank of Canada, the Governor of the Bank of England, who's also a Canadian, that the greatest threat to our economy is climate change. Trying to do something about climate change is not the greatest threat. Climate change itself is the greatest threat. We know from national defense experts around the world that the greatest threat to national security is climate change. Not doing something about climate change, but climate change itself. Doing something about climate change is not a threat, it's a chance. It's a chance to turn the growth of CO2 around. And we all have to realize, climate change does not stop at uncomfortable. If we lose control of this and we don't turn it around, it goes all the way to fatal. Fatal for our way of life, fatal for most of humanity, fatal for most people in Canada. It won't be fatal for us, except a very few of us, from heat stroke, but it will be fatal for future generations. And it's like a big ship, it will turn slowly. We have 12 years to get the rudder over, basically, and then we have a chance to save ourselves. Colwood's been making a contribution for years now. We've electrified all of the fleet that we can, and more than anybody else has. And every change we've made has saved us money. So we're not afraid to make changes, we're good at this. So let's make the declaration and have staff bring forward the ideas. Making the declaration doesn't mean to say you have to adopt all the ideas, that's a separate decision. So let's just make the declaration and have staff bring forward the ideas, and keep doing our bit, and praying wouldn't hurt either.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm not a climate denier, and I, I know I'm gonna be probably in a very hostile room, especially with the opening comments that there were. I'm, I'm like Bill Nye, the Science Guy, because he's not a science guy, he's actually an engineer. And I, I have a different perspective of, of this right now. I, I'm not denying that climate change isn't happening, I mean, it is, it's getting warmer, and it's proven scientifically, I agree with you. IPCC is 2,500 of the scientists around the world, and they're not all necessarily the top scientists, I can tell you that one thing. Because I don't wanna be a contrarian here, but when I first, I think I first became, I jumped aboard the boat. I know this is a very, very divisive subject, and it seems to be a very populist political thing to do right now. My first point is, number one, what am I, how am I gonna say this? You know, it's all our responsibilities, it's just not a government responsibility, it's an individual's responsibility also, every one of us in this room. And for, for, for us to do this, you know, I, I can jump aboard the gravy train and, and do this, but it has no bite to me right now. It has no bite. And, and, and then when I started carefully trying to look at all sides of this right now, to understand the subject, you know, my first introduction was the old Vice President Gore, who went on TV, and, and it was, I forget his presentation, the, yeah, The Inconvenient Truth. Well, you know, I, I went and bought the book, and I thought, okay, I'm gonna get really smart about this. You know, the, the interesting thing, folks, is that if you look at the data, and, and I'm a data-driven guy, I really am, but if you look at the data, and you, I scratched my head a little bit, because he says, well, look how things are lining up here, like CO2 is, is correlates extremely well with temperature change. Well, it doesn't shape, but take a look at it, blow it up and take a look at it. And do you realize that temperature changes well before CO2, you know, rise in CO2, it's 800 years later? So why, why is that? And, and I started looking into this a little more. So I started reading things that were from MIT, the Astrophysicist's Lab, and NASA, and their data, and clearly what they showed, because they, they do it by satellite and by weather balloons right now, where they, they take the temperature of the troposphere, which is the height, for those that are not scientists, it's the highest atmosphere before you get into space. And what it shows is that we're not getting the temperature, that should be the first thing that should be going if we have real greenhouse gases. And then I started looking into more historical data again, and what I saw was, was really troubling to me that, wow, none of this correlates really at all now. I mean, are we the cause of it? Well, it just seems like, and I don't wanna be, sound like a broken record, but there is history of where we've even been warmer in our, in our past than we are today. And so, and that, that kind of contributes, trying to figure out what the heck is, why is that? Well, there was an explanation by the MIT and the NASA where they agreed, where their top scientists agree, that, isn't it funny how this correlates, I mean, almost to the T, with the number of sunspots, which is the magnetization of, of the sun? So, you know, I'm sitting on the fence right now, I guess, folks, that's all I'm trying to say. And, and, I mean, I'll vote, you know, if, if the group thinks that, that's the way we'll vote, but it's, it's not, but to me, it's, we talk about this, but we have, there's no teeth, and there's no, you know, there's no teeth in what we're doing. And, you know, because it's the same thing when I started investigating, and I was driving our CFO a little crazy about, you know, the carbon taxes and what we're doing with them right now. And because, you know, I had a, a real wake-up call when I went and worked at McDonald's two weeks ago for Ronald McDonald House, and when we were asking everyone to contribute a dollar, you know, and it was, I was at the window, right? You think you were at the same time as me, but I was on the window. And the number of people that said, you know, I'm, I'm well into my line of credit or whatever, you know, for a buck, and I go, wow, it was interesting to see this, but here we're already collecting, and I don't know if you know this, on a $1.63 a liter of gas right now, the government actually takes more, you know, between the provincial federal and the municipal government, we take more money per liter than it actually costs for the oil. We take 52 and a half cents of, say, a $1.63 a liter, say, for example, 52 cents goes for the oil, 52 and a half cents for the carbon tax, and then BC, we have a special tax, and it's called a low emission tax, and that's another 10 cents. But then you sort of say, well, what are we doing? If this was being used to fight, you know, what, what we're all saying is, is causing this, I would, I'm aboard the gravy train, let's do it. But that's the problem right now, it's not. And that's why I'm a bit, you'll find me just, I'm just sitting on the fence about this whole issue right now. And I mean, there's nothing wrong, I mean, Mike, Michael has been our, Counselor Baxter's been very, very good, and, and I'm just trying to understand a lot. been very, very good, and I'm just trying to understand a lot of what he's trying to say to me right now, but it's just that I just, I just hate seeing these tax grabs right now, especially when, you know, 48% of the people in Canada are living paycheck to paycheck. I just, I'm having problems with this, and just, I can't reconcile this. So that's just my thoughts on it. Thank you.
So I got a slightly different take than my friend, Counselor Kobayashi. And I recognize that maybe some could debate the, you know, the cause of climate change, but I look at it at the balance of probabilities and what if we're wrong? And really spewing junk in the atmosphere is like, you know, 40 years ago, we used to spew junk into the Great Lakes, and that was wrong. And, you know, now we're probably spewing junk into space, which will turn out to be wrong. So absolutely, it's something I'd rather address and be proven that it was wrong than not address and be proven that it was wrong. So I'm not, I'm certainly not opposed to doing whatever we can to help the environment and improve it. And I certainly recognize that in the first world, we have an obligation, I believe, to go further and beyond so that we can transfer things to where the problems really are. You know, the pollution in some of the other parts of the world are staggering compared to ours. So, you know, maybe we should spend a few bucks to figure out how to help them transfer from where they were to where they need to be, you know, quicker than we're going to. So, you know, working on climate change and issues, I'm all for. You, everybody at the table here will recall that I was pushing for a committee to look at the beach, you know, what are we going to do there? There are going to be impacts from rising sea level, there are going to be impacts from, I believe, from larger storm surges. So that's the kind of thing I think we should be doing. But, you know, philosophically, I'm just, I'm just not the guy who wants to join a club because all the cool kids belong. And I don't want to run around to the front of the parade and say, look, I'm leading the parade. I just want to roll up the sleeves and do the things that we can do. And the city, you know, I think Michael, Michael was good on this point, Counselor Baxter, was good on this point, on saying what the city has done already and where it has gone. So the city has a good track record of what it's doing. You know, our strategic plan, what was the line I flagged from the strategic plan, sort of like, continue to lead, you know, continue on the things that we have done, should maintain Callwood's leadership role in climate action. I'm all over that. We go a little further down to discussion, and some like the CRD have focused on aspirational statements and lobbying of other jurisdictions. I mean, blah, blah, blah. You know, let's let them do what they're going to do. Let's just do what we can within our borders, as well as we can, to the best of our abilities, without maybe jumping on this latest bandwagon of it's a climate emergency. If we heard tonight that we need to panic, the last thing we should ever do is panic, I don't think that's helpful in any situation. I'd say we have in front of us probably a task list plenty long enough that we should be working through, knocking it off, making improvements that we can make. You know, others in the region will do what they think is right, will certainly observe, learn, but let's not just run around jumping on the latest bandwagon of a climate emergency, which Michael tried to explain how it absolutely was an emergency, and that was the only possible word. It's, you know, I agree, I agree with some of the timelines and the negative consequences, I just don't agree with jumping on this bandwagon. I'd say let's just stick within Callwood, do what we can as well as we can, and carry on.
Thank you. I guess part of what I think we're supposed to do around this table is reflect the views of the community. We had a number of speakers here tonight who all spoke about the importance of addressing climate change. If you watch Netflix and listen to Richard Attenborough, you'll hear all about how quickly glaciers are melting, how sea level is rising. I've been back as far as 2006, we had Water in the City Conference that we put on in conjunction with the Water Commission and brought experts from around the world in terms of what is happening everywhere in the world, not just here, looking at it from a global perspective. And a number of those speakers were from places like Australia, where managing scarce water resources is a matter of life and death for communities. We've seen the forest fires burning in Australia, causing untold problems there, here. One of the presentations that I attended was the Association of Vancouver Island and Coastal Communities, when it was held in Suk. And we had experts discussing, you know, how quickly sea level is rising, how quickly we are achieving the predictions, you know, are we right, are we wrong? The fine details didn't matter as much as the big picture. And the big picture was looking at places like the Lower Mainland and what it's going to cost to put the dikes in place to mitigate what's going to happen in downtown Victoria when the sea level rise puts the water lapping into the restaurants, it's on the inner harbor. We all have impacts, and there are certainly no lack of indicators to show that this is a real issue. You know, we can debate probably almost any organization as famous as NASA. They didn't think of everything. First woman to walk in space, what didn't they have? Space suit that would fit. They had one for everybody else, but not for her. So, I mean, we all get things wrong from time to time, small details can escape us. But cumulatively, the big picture is both that massive changes are coming to our environment, and we may or may not be able to predict exactly how they're happening, but we do need to be prepared to do something about them. Speaking with our indigenous partners in this region, they're very concerned about how we've treated this land. The old chief Sam, before the current chief Sam, spoke to me about how they used to harvest from Esquimalt Lagoon. And you can't, haven't been able to do that here since 1949. They would like to get that back. They would like to see our salmon able to spawn and produce. Everybody's talking about the lack of sports fishing. Our indigenous partners have a very long history with the land, and they want to restore its functioning. I think we could all agree that's a reasonable and valuable goal. But we're also here to represent our community. And in this community, we've had a lot of people step forward. They've put solar panels on their roof, they've baked with the power of the sun, we've put in electric vehicle charging stations, we have a lot of early adopters, they're making a difference. All of our kids, whether they're your kids or my kids or somebody else's kids, it doesn't matter, they are trying to envision a world that they can be a part of in a way that's comfortable and productive. And the biggest factor for climate change from our Water in the City Conference back in 2006 was economic. When everywhere else in the world is in big trouble, they're all going to start looking enviously at us. So we do, we need to do what we can to make a difference, and I completely agree with everyone's points that we need to make it count. But I also agree that our community expects us to do something, and I think that we should because we represent them.
Thank you, Your Worship. Briefly, I won't reiterate what many of us have said, and some very eloquent speakers in the gallery as well, but I'm always wary about CRD initiatives because often we find that the next year, there's been a freshly minted department that they're now asking for funding for us to support, which is not in this letter, but is yet to come, I'm sure in some form or another. I would far rather see us take our own local initiatives here, many of which have been spoken about, and I do believe that it starts in our homes and in our communities first. That's where we can have an impact. So however, having said all that, it feels, you know, sometimes things are more art than science, and it just, it feels like the science is fluid, perhaps, in some respects, and I'm not a scientist, but it feels like it's the right thing to do to move in this direction, like many of us have said. And be a part of something that perhaps is a little bit bigger than just our community. We can reflect the fact that we want to move in that direction, but take our action locally and spend our finite dollars for things that have an impact in our community. So, having said that, I do believe I'm going to support this initiative.
Thank you, Worship. I'm kind of on the fence, to be honest with you, because I really, truly believe that the direction that we're moving, and Counselor Baxter had highlighted the many great things that we are doing as a community, it should just be the normal. Right? We should continue down the path. We should be encouraging people to think of the environment with every action they take. We shouldn't have to declare an emergency, it's just a course of everyday life. And I understand the passion from the people that are here today, but I wonder how we spread the word to my neighbor. You know, I'll look over the fence and say, hey, is climate change a big deal for you? What are you going to do? And so, you know, they'll acknowledge it, of course, but they'll say, you know, I recycle, I compost, I have low-flush toilets, I try to walk, but it really pisses me off when I buy something that's overpackaged. You know, so stuff like that. And then when I, you know, I go, I was in Galveston, Texas, this, just a couple of months ago, and I was absolutely stunned that they didn't have a recycling program. You throw everything in the garbage. And, you know, I just want to make sure, I know it's easy sometimes to stray off the menu, and, but, you know, I want to make sure that what we do is for Callwood, that we're not making declarations to lobby Saudi Arabia to cap their wells, as noble as that might be. But we've also seen, you know, declaring an emergency as an excuse to look beyond our borders and forget about who we are actually servicing. And, you know, I do concur with Counselor Kobayashi and maybe Counselor Parkinson about, you know, when we make these declarations, are they made, are they just words, are they hollow? So we do need to put some incentive into whatever action we take. And I look as a father of a family with three kids, I'd love to do more, I'd love to buy an electric car, I can't afford it, I got three kids. I'd love to put solar panels on my roof, I can't. I've got, you know, three kids, and I've got sports, and I've got, like, it's not financially viable for me, although I would love to be able to do that. So I think although we do our part, we sure have to implore the province and the federal government to incentivize people that, like me, like my neighbor, who have kids and other challenges that would like to do more, but financially can't. So, that's it, thank you.
I just want to deal with some perhaps misapprehensions. We're not voting on carbon tax tonight, we're not voting on any taxes, we're not voting to go to Saudi Arabia or even send them a letter. We're just voting to make an honest declaration of a fact. And it was mentioned that there were 2,200 scientists in IPCC, but it's not just IPCC. The latest numbers I saw were that 97% of scientists in the world agree that climate change is happening and it's anthropomorphic, we're causing it. They don't all agree on exactly how to tackle it, they certainly don't all agree with the carbon tax. We don't all agree with the carbon tax, some of us do, some don't. And I don't think we should even be talking about that at this table. That's an issue we can have no impact on. And I think, as I say, we should make an honest declaration and then ask for a staff report. And, you know, if staff says the only things you can do are going to cost money that we don't want to spend, then we're going to turn it down. If there's a way that we can save money for the city or for the citizens of Callwood without it costing more than it saving, then let's look at that seriously. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to call the question. We have the motion in front of us, so all those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Parkinson and Kobayashi opposed. It passes. Moving on to eight point four. Planner 342 Whale Road, Affordable Housing Financial Partnership, the Aboriginal Land Trust are requesting financial support and partnerships related to the proposed 124-unit affordable housing rental development at 342 Whale Road. The rest, excuse me, the request includes waiving amenity, development cost charges, application fees, proposal to amend S. 219 covenant, and a quest for a grant for the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. Does council have any questions for staff? Counselor Parkinson?
Just a few things. I guess firstly, and not 100% directed at the issue at hand, but less than a month ago, we passed our financial plan, at which point we took half a million dollars out of the reserve, Affordable Housing Reserve, and put it into, I think, a short-term reserve. I'm not going to claim to actually understand the mechanics of it, but it was moved around and with this sort of saying, well, it's just there, it's not necessary that we're going to use it, it's there, it'll be easier to access in future years if we don't use it this year. And then a month later, we have a report recommending we use it without maybe addressing that issue. I don't, it just, it's surprising to me, and I just think that a complete report would have said, listen, we know we said this, we didn't see it coming, but all of a sudden it came out of the blue. So that's perhaps not the topic we're here to. I do have a couple of questions. The Galloping Goose upgrade, I think there's about a $40,000 approximate budget for that, and I'm just wondering what that is, if I could, I visualize the site as being sort of a rectangular building sort of paralleling Whale Road, and then the back third of the site or something is sort of left. Is that what the $40,000 goes to landscape that, you know, land that's orphaned between where the building will be and the Galloping Goose?
Through your worship, the $40,000 identified in the Section 219 Covenant Development Agreement would go toward the restoration works of the area that's been disturbed along the Galloping Goose Trail corridor there.
Do we know what the plan is for that orphaned third of the site? Or whatever portion it may be, maybe it's 20, 25%, but it's, you know, the part that's between the building and the Galloping Goose is a significant portion of the site, I believe?
That portion of the site is actually within that Galloping Goose Trail corridor. That's the area that'll be restored. It's off-site.
Yes, no, I understand, but onsite, you know, of the, of the, as I understand it, and it's just from looking at plans over people's shoulders and staff, is that there is a significant portion of the site that's not part of the building, between the, but between the building and the Galloping Goose. I'm just wondering what the plans were for that corner.
By way of the development permit, there'll be a, there's a landscape plan, and that area will be secured through bonding, which is typical prior to building permit.
On the irrigation, there's been some discussion about the irrigation and perhaps waiving of, of the concept of a well that would be used to connect to the irrigation on Whale Road. But I think the solution that was proposed was that perhaps there would be a meter and a, and a standalone irrigation system, and I wonder if anybody had looked at just extending the existing irrigation system on Whale Road so that there wasn't a separate meter and a separate system and a separate maintenance issue for crews? Has that been addressed or looked at?
The details of the servicing hasn't been agreed to at this point. That comes prior to building permit, so...
Okay. Well, I guess, I guess my only point is if, if every effort could be made to not have a separate system, but to connect it to the existing system on Whale Road, which, you know, may or may not be feasible, but rather than just do a standalone system that, in my opinion, creates more work for the city crews than justified, if it could be looked at. I'd like to ask about the sewer upgrade fee of $510,000. If I read the report correctly...
Yep.
I'd like to suggest that we deal with these things one at a time on the, on the recommendation, just because we, you know, I certainly have questions and comments on a lot of these, and although I want to propose passing number one, I've got changes to make to others, and if we try and do it all at once, we're going to get confused.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just looking for the, for the motion.
So it's, it's actually under options at the end of the report.
There we go. Okay, okay, so six. Okay, so, so are you, Counselor Baxter, may I just confirm, so you would like to go line by line through the six options?
Well, item by item, one, and then two, and then three.
All right. I'm fine with that, so I'm going to allow though Counselor Parkinson, since he had the floor, to comment on Section 1, 1 first, if you have any opinions on that, Counselor Parkinson. And then we'll come, we'll, we'll circle around to your other. Because I do understand where Counselor Baxter's coming from.
Fair enough. Okay, I'll pass, I'll pass the floor.
You'll pass on that one? Okay, so we are, so right now, what we're working through is, so the recommendation number one, I'll just read it out for the public as well, that council recommends providing a financial grant from the Affordable Housing Revere, excuse me, Reserve Fund to support the Aboriginal Land Trust Affordable Housing Project at 342 Whale Road in the amount, in the amount of $4,000 per unit, with conditions guaranteeing that the grant will be used to support not-for-profit affordable housing, and that grant will equate to $496,000. So that is point one. Is there any discussion on point one?
I'd like to move that.
Oh, you just, okay, thank you. Move by seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Day? And then Counselor Jensen?
Thank you. So my, so my question is kind of, I guess I need my question answered before I can decide about point number one. So my question is, when, when the big hole was excavated, there was a number of mitigations that were required that I believe the city ended up having to pay for ourselves. So I, I would like staff to answer whether or not that is true, and if so, what amount of money have we already put into that site?
It's through your worship. I can't answer with certainty, certainty, Counselor Day, but I believe what you're most likely referring to is that we secure the requirement for some mitigations to occur prior to the next development on, via the covenant, specifically referring to the rock wall, for instance, the restoration of the, of the rock wall in the amount of $480,000. I can't think of any other specific efforts underway by the city. It sounds like there might be some background from another council.
Yeah, I, I think Counselor Day is referring to the work the city did to stabilize the slope, both on Whale Road and beneath the townhouses, and I think there was a charge against their property taxes. So I, just to ensure that the city will be receiving those.
Thank you. And, sorry, that is, that is consistent with what I've, with what I'm trying to say, which is the reason for the, the charge on title of $480,000 for the rock wall. So we secured that by, by covenant.
Actually, the 220 did go on taxes, the, for the remediation work inside the site after it became unstable. And, and if it's no longer a charge on taxes, then it's been paid. The covenant, obviously, couldn't have been introduced for that purpose because that was some years later. The covenant was at the time of rezoning, and I believe that was the contribution of the site to the construction of Whale Road, which includes the rock and everything else. But, but I think in the end, it became a generalized contribution to the construction of Whale Road, which the city has long ago paid and absorbed. So it's, as far as I know, it's not sitting out, out there waiting for that $480,000. No.
All right.
Sorry. So just could I get clarification if, if those amounts have been paid?
Through your worship, the $480,000 have not been paid, and, and it's being requested as, as part of this request. The $220,000, thank you for the clarification, Counselor Baxter, have been paid. They were put onto taxes and they have been paid. There's no outstanding taxes on the property.
Sorry, that was the rock fill. The $480,000 was the value of the rock fill. Okay, thank you. I understand what you're saying now.
Yes, so I too am a bit unclear, but I was at committee when we moved forward to remediate this roadway to the tune of half a million dollars that our taxpayers were out of pocket. And I'm no whiz developer, but I'm reading this, and I'm wondering, A, what happened to the half million dollars that were out of pocket, and B, why are we considering saucing in another half million dollars, which means we're out of pocket again? So am I, am I missing something, or? I would like a clear answer on whether the half million dollars for us to remediate that property, regardless of who owned it and when, that came out of my back pocket, and I need some clarity on this before I can decide how I'm going to vote, before we're asking for some other commitments as far as DCC costs, et cetera.
Yes, your worship, the, the half a million dollar you're referring to, I believe, is the $480,000, which has been secured on title, which is a condition of the development. So we don't have the dollars for it. We have recognized the revenue for it in anticipation of the next phase of development. To answer your question about the additional funds, the $496,000, that would be a contribution from the city for the purpose of affordable housing, which is really irrespective of, of previous, previous commitments from, from the developers. That's a, we've, we've made these per-unit contributions to affordable housing projects in the past.
Okay, so I can get behind the fact that we've cooked it up a little here so that, you know, we're going to have a return of contributions and, you know, for future ratepayers in our community. But, again, I'm, I'm, I'm perhaps going to learn more as we go through this process here, but I'm, so, anybody else?
Sir Baxter. I think, I think the way the, to look at the $480,000 is currently secured on title, and, and we are due to get that if the project goes ahead. It is not in the staff recommendations that we waive that, but it is a request from the developer, and it's given to us as an option. The $496,000, on the other hand, is an expenditure of money for the purpose for which it's been collected, which I think is something I would far rather vote for than, for instance, the $480,000. Not saying whether I'm voting for that or not at this point, but just that I think staff are perfectly correct, and I've got to congratulate staff on all the reports I've seen tonight. They're very clear and very well organized, and I'm impressed. But in this case, the $496, as I say, is an expenditure of money for the purpose for which it has been collected, and that is why staff is recommending it, and, and I think we should proceed with that, and then we should have a real good think about anything following that. Thank you.
So I, I want to be real clear, because I'm stopping now, because what's happened is poor Counselor Parkinson started down a path where he wanted to talk about all these issues, and we stopped them, and we focused on issue one, which was the 495, and now we've drifted off again. So either we need to stay on task and, and work through these, or we need to be grandiose and, and talk about the entire situation. So at the present time, we are staying clearly on just one right now. So I am going to call the question on one, which is the $4,000 per unit. So all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Now we're going on to two, and I'll read it really quickly. That council recommends accepting metered municipal water to irrigate the city boulevard in the place of drilling a well or on private property for the same purpose in order to meet the intent of the Section 219 covenant, which is an approximately savings of $25,000 less the cost of providing a water service.
I'd like to make a motion on that regard. I'd like to move that the city build the wall, the well, because, and as long as we're given access to it, so we can use it to irrigate all of our boulevards. We did actually look for a well once before and didn't have any land available where drilling was a reasonable, would give us a reasonable expectation of success. And, and I've got success, experience in this region of both failing and succeeding at drilling wells, and you don't want to fail. And so I would propose that the city take on that in, in return for access to the water in perpetuity, and we use that for irrigating our boulevards as far as it'll go. I move that.
Thank you. I need a second on that one. All right. It's been seconded by Counselor Parkinson. Counselor Day, well, actually, Counsel, yeah, you've already motivated. Counselor Day, and then Counselors, uh, Parkinson?
So I just thought I would provide what I recall from, from the history around the time that we looked at putting in a well. It, it was a developer initiative at the time. We were talking a lot about the provision of water for irrigation, and it, it was seen to be a very positive and water-smart initiative at the time. I'm not 100% sure, given the fish-bearing stream that's behind there, that taking from the groundwater is necessarily a great idea. It might be better to stick with the, with the city water source and adjust the plantings accordingly if water supply becomes an issue in the future. So I just provide that information for where this came from.
So I, 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 I get it. I like the idea of, of a well, sort of essentially free water to irrigate a bunch of Whale Road. Of course, there are issues. Will, will the well provide enough water to irrigate it? Will it require maintenance? Is it sort of a non-standard thing for our crews to be dealing with a well as opposed to what they're, what they're used to dealing with? So I don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater. I think it might be worth some discussions, but I think as we drill into this one, Michael, we may find that, you know, the location that works on the developer's site plan for a well might be awkward to get access to the, you know, the irrigation system. So I'm going to suggest, I would like, I would like this council to leave tonight with the developer who, who has, you know, spoken to us and has been quite happy with how quickly things have moved through staff level. Let's not botch it at the council table. Let's, let's, let's give him answers tonight, whether he likes them or not. Let's, let's give him answers. And I don't, I think if we were to pass the motion as currently written, and there may still be an opportunity to talk to him and said, would you mind if we, if there was a well in the backyard that we paid for and seemed to save ourselves some water costs? Maybe there's something there, maybe there isn't. But I, I, I just think that you're going to get into a confusing mess to try to sort of set council table, say, maybe here's a solution that might work better, so.
Need to pass up the chance at free water. I mean, it's not free because you've got to pay for the pump, but Langford built, and number, I can't remember how many of these things, all over their downtown, and very little of their downtown irrigation is by city water, which is an expensive resource to produce, and has to be transported a long way. And you'll see the little signs up and down the Langford Boulevards assuring people that when there are watering restrictions, the city has no restrictions because they own the water.
Thank you. All right. So we have a motion moved by Counselor Baxter. I'm going to call the question on this. Does anybody need it read? Or does everybody, Mercy, I don't have it.
I do, do I?
Counselor Baxter, do you want to repeat it?
Well...
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so I, I move that the requirement on the developer for building a well be removed, and instead, we ask the developer to simply provide the city with access in perpetuity if the city can find a site where we can expect to drill for water and that does not interfere with any of the construction or operations of, of the building.
We're sending you to a motion-writing course.
Is, is that, is that because I write them so well, or because I, I write them so badly?
Yeah. All right. We've heard the motion. All those in favor? All those opposed? I oppose. So Counselor Kobayashi, Martin, Jensen, Logan, opposed.
Trying to save you guys money.
All right. We're still on two. Does, is there, does anybody want to move the, what's...
I'll move staff recommendation, your worship.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Parkinson. Any discussion on it? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed. Counselor Baxter opposes. So if you look on that sheet, one and two was recommended by staff. Three, four, five, six, seven, and eight are not. So I am not going to go through three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. You, if council has any motions that they would like to put on the table, they may... If council has any motions that they would like to put on the table, they may, but otherwise, I'm gonna move on. Yeah, Councilor Parkinson gets his chance, and then you'll get your chance.
Okay, I'd like to talk about the sewers in a moment, but can, perhaps somebody can enlighten me. Number three talks about waiving community amenity contribution and affordable housing contribution. Are we charging the affordable housing project affordable housing fees? So I've got to tell you, that doesn't make much sense to me, although we could just rejiggle the math on the $4,000 a unit to make it make sense. But I just think optically, you don't charge affordable housing for fees to affordable housing. So I would move that council direct staff to prepare the appropriate amendments to land use bylaw to delete affordable housing contributions in the RT4 zone. $62,000.
A second?
Thank you. Second by Councilor Baxter. Any discussion?
Have a question. I'd like to hear from staff on this.
Excuse me, through your chair, through the chair. As a consequence of, it's sort of a rebate situation, so part of the contribution that you provided in option one would be returned to them. So the current reserve fund is sitting at $487,000. And then the approximate affordable housing contribution would be about $60,000. So with the 496,000, it's partially offsetting those costs. So you would have to amend the original motion to $3,900 per unit so as not to exceed the 487,000 currently in the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund.
Logan, Van Day.
Thank you, Worship. Just a question through you to staff. What we're proposing, what staff has proposed is consistent with what we have done for 2006 Suk Road and for the Gold Stream project recently. So basically, in and out, they paid, they were required to pay the fees, they're remitted through the Affordable Housing Fund, right? So this is the same process we're following.
Through your worship, correct, except for the Gold Stream, I believe the per-unit contribution was less.
Okay. So that's my only concern, Your Worship, is that we start to stray and have different requirements for the different projects. So if we're going along the same road as we have for the rest, I think we need to stay on course. And so I won't be supporting, as well-intentioned as it was put forward, I think it just sends a difficult message.
Thank you. Councilor Day?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to the consistency part as well. Definitely, the Pacific Center Family Services project received half that funding. So the $4,000 per unit is a significant contribution. And even at half that, benefit to Pacific Center Family Services. They also contributed the Affordable Housing Funds as well. So I think it's really important that we do keep to a consistent methodology and don't treat projects differently. Affordable housing is affordable housing. We expect that our partners who produce housing in Callwood will benefit from the aggregate amenity charges that we get as a whole. So I think that we're, it's not disincentivizing this one, it's sticking to a level playing field.
Thank you. Councilor Parkinson, and then I'm gonna call the question.
I would be prepared to withdraw the motion.
Oh, okay, maybe I won't call the question. Okay, you're just gonna, okay, excellent. Do you have another one? Is this how tonight's going? You're gonna withdraw to the...
Well, no, and this may be as much clarification as anything. In the staff report, we have, the line here is, "The project engineer has determined the developer must pay $510,000 to the city in relation to this clause based on the original capacity calculation of 39 units for the lot versus 124." In the developer's presentation, he indicated that it was the city that indicated how much he had to pay. And yet, when I read the sewer charge, and this is where I'd like some help from staff or perhaps even former staff, it seems to me that it's quite clear that the capacity is based on the flows, each unit being considered to contribute 1,136 liters per day, and that the developer has indicated he's doing low-flow this and low-flow that. So would quite likely come under that, in which case, his contribution would be based on flows or flow estimates or measured flows, I don't know how it would be done, as opposed to just the actual number of units, which seems to be where the $510,000 came from. So I guess I'd like some clarity there on what that's all about.
I'm gonna go to staff first and then...
Through your worship, I believe that's spot-on. The unit times the expected flows is what was used to come up with the original estimate of $510,000. And I believe the staff recommendation is to let the developer demonstrate that those flows can be lower, multiplied by the units, and a lower amount would be arrived at.
That would seem to be appropriate to me. So how does that work? He pays 510 when it's built? Someone does a calculation, he gets a rebate? Or, you know, what's, how is that implemented?
Through your worship, the estimates would be done prior to the servicing, if I understand correctly. So it wouldn't be pays in advance or rebate, it would be, the estimates would be arrived at before the payment was due.
And I understand that to meet the intent of the bylaw, and so it should save him some money.
Thank you. Is that it, sir? Councilor Baxter?
Where is that written down, that method of calculation?
Yeah, you're wrong, but you gotta speak into it.
Yeah, where is that written down, that method of calculation?
Through your worship, I don't actually know the answer to that question. I believe it's in the covenant agreement.
Okay.
And it's meant to mimic what would otherwise be in the bylaws, but I believe that the property is exempt from what's in the bylaws.
Yeah, because there is no such calculation in the bylaws. The only bylaw that we have for collecting money for this purpose is the DCC bylaw. The sewer DCC bylaw collects money for increasing the capacity of sewers. And this covenant was put in place before those bylaws were put in place and before the resolution of the sewer issues. And I believe that this property is exempt under the DCC bylaw. And therefore, if we want to treat this property the same way as every other property in the city center, they should not pay this 510,000.
So I would not doubt you on this, but I would suggest that this is something that the city would probably need to confirm, right? So I'm looking at staff. So I've just had a counselor make a statement. Do you concur with that statement? Is that a statement that you need to get more information about? What's...
Through your worship, no, I concur. It was my understanding that the area which the property is located is exempt from DCCs. That's a different question of whether or not you believe it should be paid. The principle behind it is that there will be additional flows in the sewer system as a result of the incremental increase between what was originally envisioned, 34 units, and the larger number of units, 129 units. So the difference between that is really using up additional capacity in the sewer system that would be available for other developments that have already been allocated density throughout the community. So it's a compensation for that that is secured in the covenant agreement. And that's a policy decision that council can make.
Well, outside of it being just a policy decision, it's my understanding that you'd be calculating out what Councilor Parkinson was talking about, that the flow calculation would need to get calculated back, and you'd be presenting that back to the developer at some point anyways. So is all of this not going to have to come back to this council at some point? Like, once you've calculated out what those flows are and what that dollar amount is? It seems like perhaps we're just premature in this discussion, in that this is a discussion that should still be at the staff level and then come back later because there isn't, or are you looking for a decision right now?
Through your worship, I believe that the proponent is asking for a complete waiving of that in the covenant. So that does have to be a council decision. But the actual calculations and when they occur, presuming that council approves the staff recommendation, that won't come back before council.
All right, so, okay, I'm being clear with that now. So the next person I'm looking for is a motion to something. So whatever you guys want to do...
I move the $510,000 be waived.
Thank you. I need a seconder to that. Seeing none, I will go to Councilor Day. Councilor Day, do you have a motion?
My motion would be that staff bring back a report on this information. I just don't feel like I have the information. We have a covenant. It covers 510,000 and a value of 480,000, and I'm just really not feeling comfortable with where to go with that without more information.
Okay. I got a mover. I need a seconder before I can do anything.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Can I motivate?
No, well, you can't motivate, but you, that's right. Discussion. Councilor Parkinson's looking confused, so let's have Councilor Parkinson ask a question.
Good call there, Your Worship. So what are we asking for?
For a staff report to come back about the covenant amounts, including the $510,000 for the sewer upgrade charge and the Wilford Road fill with a value of 480,000. Those are both contained in the covenant, and I would just like to really understand that before we make a choice on whether to uphold the covenant or change the covenant.
Okay, I think the covenant is crystal clear on how much he pays for his sewers, which is gonna be less than 510,000, probably substantially less. And it's clear on the rest, so I wouldn't be prepared to look at any of that. I think the covenant's clear. I'm gonna go with the covenant.
All right, thank you. Councilor Baxter?
Okay, so I asked the question then. The covenant is crystal clear. Everything staff said is absolutely correct. But the issue is, no other property, except perhaps one other that has this type of covenant, in the exempt area, is ever gonna pay that fee.
The DCC fee?
The 510.
Right. Oh, the covenant fee?
Yeah. That covenant was put in place before we knew what the solution was to the sewer issues. And whatever we think of the solution, that was the solution that the province approved. So why are we charging an affordable housing unit $510,000 when the, you know, casino that's built next door, or whatever it is, won't have to pay that? Or the 23-story luxury apartments that are built within the same area won't have to pay that? That's my question.
You got thrown out by the casino. Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion? So I'm seeing no other discussion, so I'm gonna call the question. In the, do you have the motion?
Yeah.
No, do you have it?
Yeah. Oh, you want me to read it again?
Yeah, please.
This, for, this one is that staff bring back a report...
Mike? Oh, it doesn't work. Okay.
Sorry. Staff bring back a report on the 510,000 charge for the sewer and the 480 for the rock fill, on whether they're gonna uphold or change the covenant, right?
Okay.
And the rock, too. Rocks.
And the rock, and the rock fill. All right. Council, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed to the motion? The motion passes. Councilor Baxter, Logan, and Parkinson are in the negative. All right, we're gonna move on then to 9.1. All right, bylaw number 1711, final reading. I need a mover and seconder for the Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service and Loan Authorization, bylaw number 598, 2001, amendment number 64. Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Bylaw number 1712, final reading. Callwood West Sewer Local Area Service, same, same things.
Final?
Thank you. Move, Logan and...
I'll second.
I need a seconder. Parkinson. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. 9.3, bylaw number 1...
Point of order, Your Worship.
I'm sorry?
I thought you had a faster way of doing this.
I do if it's first, second, and third. We're doing finals.
Right.
Bylaw number 1763, final reading. Callwood Main Service Area, 668 Carrendale Road. Can I get a mover and seconder for final? Thank you. Moved by Baxter, seconded by Jensen. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And then finally, bylaw number 1764, final reading. Thank you.
Second.
All those, oh, Doug, Doug seconded it. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. We have no in camera.
We've adjourned.
All those in...